Well, good morning, everyone. We'll call the June 6, 2017, meeting of the Jackson City Council to order and ask you, if would, please rise, and we'll ask Councilman Randy Wallace to lead us in our invitation and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Please play with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of leadership you have given to the members of this city council. Help us to recognize the wisdom of others and not rely solely on our own opinions. We ask that you guide us that the decision we make will be pleasing to you and make Jackson a better place to live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Lord is with us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Leanne, I think you can show all council members present, item three and item four, the approval of minutes of the May 2, 2017, to the May 18, 2017, meeting of the Jackson City Council. Council members have received copies of those minutes. If there are no corrections or any additions, if there's no objections, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation for public comment. Is anyone present who'd like to be heard on any item under new business? If you all let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and you can come up and address the council. We have one proclamation this morning. Let me ask Hank Schakker and David Greml if they would to make their way toward the front, and we'll take care of the Stone Cup, which is getting underway. Okay, this is a proclamation, "Whereas the citizens of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee hereby acknowledge the achievements of Charles David Gremls and his distinguished career in golf. David was raised and graduated high school in Rochester, New York, and graduated from Brockport University. In college, he developed his love of golf by working as an intern at various golf course venues. Whereas he moved to Adamsville in 1982 and acquired the Shallow Golf Course. David is a self-taught golf course architect and contractor. He and his father constructed a nine-hole for the Shallow Golf Course and refurbished the existing nine holes. David sold the Shallow Golf Course in 2006. David designs the holes, builds them, and designs them after built. And whereas in 1998, he constructed Falcon Ridge Golf Course in Henderson County. He then worked as a green superintendent for Jackson National Golf Course, and in 2013 was hired to be general manager and green superintendent of Woodland Hills Golf and Country Club, where he serves as many thankful members today. And whereas during his time in Jackson, he's been the first to serve as golfing community. He has worked and cooperated tirelessly with other superintendents in the area. He has supported junior golf and the Stone Cup since its inception by hosting tournaments and serving on committees. He is a friend to all golfers. And whereas in recognition of his lifetime achievements and dedication to the furtherance of the great game of golf here in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, the great state of Tennessee, and on a national level, and as part of the 2017 Stone Cup, the official golf championship for Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, let it be known that the honoree for the 2017 Stone Cup is Charles David Gremls. And therefore, we Jerry, yes, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby jointly proclaim the 2017 Albert A. Stone Junior Cup as the official golf championship of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, the sixth day of June, 2017, and urge all citizens to participate in this annual golf championship and to express appreciation to Charles David Gremls for his contributions to golf in the community. And witness whereof, we here in to set our hands, cause the seals of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and the County of Madison, Tennessee, the sixth day of June to be upheld. It is an honor for me to present this proclamation to you this morning, and thank you for all you've done for golf here, and to Hank for orchestrating all this and getting it. Congratulations. Thank you. Well, I guess one thing that...I'm speechless, I really am, but one thing is that I guess I was dated pretty good there. I'm proud to be part of golf for a very long time, as was pointed out, so it's really quite an honor to me. Golf is really important. A lot of people don't realize what we raise for charity. Golf raises over $4 billion each year through charity events. I know at Falcon Ridge we had them, Shiloh we had them, Jackson National, and now at Woodland Hills, we have several of them. So it's really something that we...that golf contributes to the society. Not to mention, there is a health benefit, recent study that I just read, that if it came from Sweden, said that golfers are 40% in better health than the average person. So, having said that, that sounds pretty good to me. And that translates into five extra years of life.
Okay.
So, that sounds pretty good in itself. And that's not to mention the effect that it has on our youth, the moral character that golf brings to our youth. So, I really encourage you to support golf, support the charities that we do, and such as the Stone Cup, and Hank has worked tirelessly on that. And I really thank him for that because he's been the driving force, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, he's also been a driving force on that, and I really appreciate the work that he does and everybody in the community that they do for golf. So, again, this is a great honor, and I thank you very, very much.
Well, Louis, you got that going for you, the health.
I may be the exception to the rule.
Dave is one of the finest gentlemen in our county. You're not going to find anybody that really has a bad word to say about Dave. He is tireless, he works. I appreciate the green superintendents, I appreciate the people that make things happen. They're the ones out digging in the dirt, so the pros out front can take all the credit. But we all, as golfers, know how hard it is and what a good job he does. Mr. Mayor, 13 years, we have this Stone Cup, made a few little revisions to it over the winter, and we have the Beverly Pierce Cup to honor our lady. We have a lady's competition down. Ms. Mona Ward is here to represent Beverly. Beverly wasn't able to come this year, so we'll be doing that, David, Mr. Thomas, we'll be doing that on this Saturday and Sunday at Woodland Hills and Jackson National for the qualifying rounds. We also play for the Talking Good Cup, which is for the juniors, and then the match play will be at the Jackson Country Club the weekend after. I would be amiss if I didn't thank the Bank of Jackson, who's been our kind sponsor, McDonald's, Walmart, Sam's Club, and the Jackson Sun have been big supporters of this tournament, because this tournament is the tournament for the citizens of Jackson and Madison County. And I thank the council, and I thank you all for allowing us a little bit of time every year so that we can announce this, and I thank all y'all for coming today to honor my good friend in Christ, David Gremls. God bless y'all.
Item seven, we have one recognition this morning that we want to hear from, if this individual is present. Local update of census addresses. Is Fay Anderson here? Yes, Fay, thank you for being here. Feel free to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Fay Anderson. I actually reside in Clarksville, Tennessee. I've lived in Dyersburg for over 10 years, so this side of the state is very near and dear to my heart. I'm here to talk about the very first step in the 2020 census, which is, we all know, is a mandated historical event that happens every 10 years. It's very important. It brings money back into the community based on the population count. So, I wanted to talk about what the very first step of that is, and it's actually called the LUCA program. LUCA stands for Local Update of Census Addresses. And it gives governments and communities a once-every-10-year chance to look over the Census Bureau's shoulder and check your addresses against what we have on file, so that when we mail out the actual questionnaires, we know that they're going to the right place and there's someone living at the address where they're going to. So that is what we're doing right now. It's a federally...we actually participate with states, counties, federally mandated tribes with a reservation or off-reservation trust lands, cities, towns, boroughs, villages, as well as townships. LUCA is very important because it does improve the census address list for the 2020 census. The accuracy and completeness of the address list is critical to the success of the actual census itself. New for LUCA for 2020, we're offering streamlined participation with full address list reviews. We're providing the digital address list in a standard software format, including ungeocoded address records for state and county governments. We're including residential structure coordinates if they're available. We're allowing participants to submit residential structure coordinates if they're available. And we're requiring residential multi-unit structure identifiers. Multi-unit identifiers, in 2020, LUCA did not require for governments to put in apartment numbers, such as Apartment A, Apartment B. In 2020, we are requiring that that be attached to the address of the actual file itself. In preparing for LUCA, we're asking you guys to develop a strategy for your address review, review the Census Bureau's count of residential addresses by the census block for your government, confirm that your address list contains the multi-unit identifiers, identify local residential address resources, such as building permits, E911 address files, local utility records, annexation records, and assessment and taxation files. And then plan to send a representative to one of our technical training workshops. Of course, the Census Bureau requires the information that we gather is under Title 13 of the United States Code, which requires us to ensure confidential treatment of everything that we collect, every address, as well as map structure points. We require that all liaisons and reviewers of the addresses to also abide by the confidentiality and security guideline. There are three ways that you guys will be able to participate in the 2020 census when it comes to LUCA. The first one is geographic update software. The second one is digital, which is GIS spreadsheet database software. And the third, if you have less than 6,000 addresses, we're offering paper and paper maps as well. The first one that I mentioned, GUPS, is a self-contained GIS software processing package that includes the Census Bureau's address list, the Census Bureau's count of residential addresses by block, and the tiger ship partnership shape files. It also allows for addition of external geospatial data. The good thing about GUPS software, it does not require Internet access, so a lot of the smaller communities can use it if they have a computer, they can pop the DVD in and still do an address list review by using that form. So, next for LUCA, we're offering our technical workshops in the fall that'll be across Tennessee, so that we will spread them across, so everyone will have a fairly decent drive to get to one, but we'll bring you in, we'll set you down, we'll show you how to use the software so there's no confusion. And then, when it's time to do your LUCA review, you'll have 120 days to complete that review and get it back to the Census Bureau. Next for LUCA, July of 2017, the mayor's going to receive a packet in the mail that's going to ask him, number one, which way does he want to participate? Does he want to, does he not? Of course, we know that the census is so important for the money that flows back into this community, so in order to really get the count right in this community, we're hoping that you guys will participate with us for the program. And all you have to do is decide how you want to do it, fill the forms out, send them back in, and then everything will be mailed back to you at that time. The last thing that I want to leave you with, I'm going to leave a packet at the mayor's office with my contact information, a little bit about LUCA, how you guys can contact me, as well as the email address for the LUCA website, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I really appreciate you guys listening to me this morning.
Thank you very much for being here. Any questions for council?
Good question. You said that the city's got to decide fairly soon whether they're going to use one of those three methods. Would the seminar be before that, so that we can make that decision, or?
No, I think you make the decision, and then, when you come to the seminar, you'll know which workshop to sit in on.
Okay. But there'll be information for us to decide which way we want to do it.
Yes, yes. There will. And the website is wonderful. You can go on there right now and kind of pull down and see how each one of those work and kind of make a decision from that as well.
Thank you, Fay. But it is absolutely critical that we get a good accurate count of our population in Jackson, not only for potential revenue, but we need that for many, many different reasons. And normally, we would lean on our planning department for a lot of that, which we, I'm sure, will probably do again this year. But we want to make sure that we inform all of our city employees that it's going to be absolutely critical, especially our housing and zoning people, that may know where some of these outlying apartment buildings are and this type of thing, where we can make sure we get the most accurate count of the population of Jackson in this census that we can get. So, thank you for being here.
One thing I do want to mention, I'm the partnership specialist for the state of Tennessee. Right now, I am the only partnership specialist in Tennessee. So, I'm coming back and I'm working with local governments on complete count committees, where you put a committee together and you look at the hard to count in your area and you come up with a plan on how to count the hard to count. So, I'll be back in touch with you guys, and we'll talk about how we can set that up as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Next item is under first readings. I'll have an ordinance, consideration, ordinance to rezonate property located at 623 and 635 Orwell Road, from RS Single Family Residential District to O Office District, containing 2.60 acres, more or less, submitted by Milton Cravens and Ray Davis. Stan?
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request in your packet. This was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending it to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have concerning this rezoning. I will state that concerning this rezoning, I have met with one resident that adjoins it, and they seem in favor or in support of the rezoning, and I haven't talked with anyone out in the area that was opposed to this one.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Is there a motion, a second, so we can continue discussion here?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Second. Any discussion from council to Stan or?
Oh, Mayor, I want to ask one question. What kind of buffer we going to have back there between that Pleasant Plains Road? You going to have any type of buffer?
When they get ready to develop the site, they'll have to come to the Planning Commission with the site plan, and they'll also have to come in with their elevations of the buildings, and at that time, we'll establish the buffer for the residential adjoining.
Okay. Before we vote, this is an ordinance on first reading, which will necessitate a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if anyone's present who'd like to be heard in opposition to or in support of the passage of this ordinance. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and if there's no further discussion, council, please vote. And, Leanne, the vote is?
Eight yes, one abstaining.
Eight yes, one abstaining.
Thank you. Item two is consideration, ordinance to rezonate property located at 10 McClellan Road, from RS1 Single Family Residential District to O Office District, containing 3.20 acres, more or less submitted by NCG Partners. Leanne?
Again, you have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending it to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have concerning it. Also, I will state that I received a number of calls about this. Some were questioning, you know, what uses were going to be allowed, because they remembered before, about 12 months ago, this item came before you, and at that time, they were proposing a convenience store, which we were not recommending, we didn't think commercial retail uses were appropriate for this site, so we recommended against it, and that was turned down by you. And under your zoning ordinance, a petitioner can only petition once every 12 months, so they had to wait 12 months before they could bring it back. This time, they're asking for the O District, which is our office-only district. It doesn't allow any retail. And discussing that with people, I really didn't, except for one, I did get one developer in the area that does residential development, Jerry Winberry, that said that he preferred this to stay residential because he felt like the office could lead to other things that might hurt his residential developments in the area. So, he wanted me to pass that on to you. So, he did say that he was not supportive of this. Other than that, I have not received any negative calls. I've had questions, but no one saying that they were just opposed to it.
Okay, in order to continue further discussion, I'll need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion approved.
Say we have a motion made for approval and a second. We'll continue discussion. If council has any questions, of Stan?
So, the Planning Commission is recommending.
They are, because it was in compliance with the master plan for this area.
Oh, wait a minute, excuse me, I take that back.
We have a motion, and we have a second to go ahead and continue.
Sir, I'll take that motion back.
Louis, I'll defer to our city attorney, as far as Robert's rules here, if he can withdraw his motion.
If he suggests that the motion was made in error, that he has to...
You may withdraw it.
...to the objection of the council. If there's no objection, it would be appropriate to allow him to do the motion.
Any objection, council, for Councilman Cisco to withdraw that motion? No objection heard? How about the second?
Objection. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With respect to the city attorney's opinion, when we have public hearings, should we have a motion and a second before we have public hearings?
Yes, we do. We're not in the public hearing yet, we're still trying to get a motion.
I understand, but when we have public hearings, should we hear from the public first before the council votes?
No, I think any action before this council, before it's discussed in any way, has to have a motion and a second for discussion.
It's my opinion that it prejudice the...
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
It prejudice the people from speaking.
Yeah, I understand. But to get any item of business for a vote, it has to have a motion and a second, then we can go in any direction this council so wishes. So, we've had a motion to withdraw, with no objection from council. I'll ask again, is there a motion for approval and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion made. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second, where this is open for discussion, for council to ask Stan any particular question they'd like to ask, and then we'll have the public hearing.
Do I have a question?
Now, Stan.
Well, I was just...I didn't want to get confused about this, but I know would mean we're against it, right?
That's true.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dutton?
Stan, you said you received only one call against this? I received other calls from the residents in the area, but I did not receive...they didn't tell me exactly what their position was, they just had questions about the rezoning. They didn't say, "I'm going to oppose this," or "I'm opposed to that." The ones I received just called and was asking questions of me. Now, Jerry Winberry, he called me, and he did state that he was opposed to that. He's developing Shallow Springs and the Traditions, that's just north of here, and he felt like that this area should stay residential, and he did not want to see the properties zoned to office. And he asked me that I state that on his behalf.
Is that all he said? Just he didn't think it should be zoned to office?
He thought it...
He didn't have any other reason for wanting it?
Well, just that he thought it could lead to other rezonings in the area that could be negative to his residential development that he's got in the area.
May I say?
As the person that submitted this, are they here today? Part of the partnership?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll hear from them in the public hearing. Stan, if I understand the process correctly, the Planning Commission approved this based upon the fact that offices have been included in the land use plan for that area, correct? And that's basically the reason for their approval.
Yeah, before, when the Planning Commission reviewed the land use patterns in this area, at the time, this track, because of the high volumes of traffic that are at that intersection of McClellan and Pleasant Plains, they felt that that track wasn't conducive to residential because of all the traffic. And also, they were looking at the Fellowship Bible Church across the street that's institutional, and they thought that office would be a good match, because office and residential tend to mesh pretty well, because offices are usually from the eight-to-five, nine-to-five hours, they're not into the night. Offices have low traffic volumes, so they don't generate the traffic that a convenience store or some commercial use would be. And they're usually not that intrusive, and in most cases, these offices in areas like this would be residential-looking in types of buildings that they use, so they usually fit fairly well. So, that's the reason why they established the office use for this corner, is they just felt it would be conducive to the area and residential wasn't, and they felt like it wouldn't have a tremendous impact on the residential that's around it. But again, that's just the background. But once they established it as a part of the land use, then the Planning Commission makes their decisions based on that guide.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, I will report that I did receive numerous, because this is in my district, numerous calls from the surrounding residents that were opposed to it, they feel like they had purchased their property and built their houses there, based on this area being residential, and they weren't happy with anything going, anything besides residential, even office, they weren't happy with that. So, I will...
Well, I had several people on McClellan that...
Yeah, because this touches you too.
Right.
Yeah, I have too.
And they gave no vote.
Okay. Any other questions of council before we?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I just have a statement to make. I'm not against business, I'm not against industry. I've been on this council a good while. I've always been the thought that we need to be progressive and develop business and industry, but there are certain places that you need to leave quality of life alone and let the people live their life like they ought to, and I see nothing out that way but churches and houses. And I can't understand why you'd want to put some offices out there to begin with. I'm not against that, but I just don't see myself, maybe I'm not thinking in the right mood that you all are, but that's just the reason I ask on Mr. Cravens' things about a buffer there that separates the residential area off Orwell, Orwell, it's where you can zone for offices and so forth, because it's all up and down there. But this area, that it's not, and I don't see doing this, these people, I really don't. It's going to disrupt their lives. Thank you.
Okay. Any other statements or comments from council before we open the public hearing?
What's the main difference in this one and the one we voted yes to earlier? What's the main? I'm trying to...
In terms of the way it's situated?
With the planning committee, there seems to be no difference, because they both fit your criteria. So, I guess it's in the fact, and I trust my city council people who've gotten these phone calls, that for whatever reason, the people in this particular area don't want anything other than houses, but the people in the other area, they want it.
Let me just get the... Let me...here's the land use plan for the area where the Cravens rezoning is located. The two lots that you see in this area are the Cravens rezoning that they're proposing, and y'all recommended approval, or y'all approved it on first reading. The area in blue is what we classify as institutional, and that's where the churches are located. This is Love and Truth Church's property. This is Wes Jackson, and Wes Jackson also owns this tract of land that was once the Methodist Church had bought that and was going to locate, but they decided not to, and Wes Jackson owns that. Well, on the land use plan, this is shown as conducive for office, and so they're close in close proximity to that. And also, if you go back to here, which is, you know, that's Thompson Farms with the commercial that's there. So, in some people's minds, they're proximity to what's... So in some people's minds, their proximity to what's already zoned office or could be zoned office and what's already developed commercially is very close. When you get up to the corner of McClellan, this is the area we're talking about right now. You've got Fellowship Bible Church that's here on the south side, but short of that, the rest of this is yellow, which is residential. So in some people's minds, this doesn't have the proximity. Now, if you go over to here, you pick up the commercial development that's along the bypass. So, you know, it's, I guess, there's some similarly situated aspects of these parcels, but in some of the people I've talked to, they felt like the Cravens rezoning was closer to what was already established as a pattern for commercial, whereas this one was more oriented toward an area that was more largely residential and that's the difference. But in the minds of the Planning Commission, they felt that both were similarly situated and that both were at major intersections, both were in areas that weren't really conducive to residential anymore because of those high traffic volumes, and they felt like office was a good compatible land use based on the institutional uses that were in the area and given that office and residential tend to cohabit fairly easily.
Thank you.
Any other questions or statements by Council before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and this is ordinance on first reading and necessitates a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone's present who would like to be heard on this ordinance, either in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. If you would, just come on up and pull up a chair and introduce yourself and give us your address if you would, if anyone here who'd like to be heard. Okay, seeing no one, hearing no one, we'll close the public hearing and, well, okay, all right. Got a light hand raiser. Hold up, Joe.
My name is Joel Alexander. This piece of property I've owned for probably 12 or 15 years and trying to find an appropriate use for it and of course, I don't remember the...
Can you pull the microphone in front of you?
Remember the process, probably a year ago. And at that time, the main oppositions that I heard from the audience and from the Council, they weren't opposed to the office, but they didn't want the convenience store, they were fine with the office. The convenience store, of course, would have alcohol and lottery ticket sales if the neighborhood didn't own. It would have excessive lighting, I guess, for security around the business like that. It would probably generate more traffic than an office use and it would be open hours other than when, you know, an office would be. So in talking with Stan, he, and the fact that y'all had approved a small area plan that showed this as office at some point. So Stan recommended that when Dr. Cravens decided to come in, that it would be an appropriate time for us to just try to get both of them zoned since they were so similar. And he recommended it and the Planning Commission, I believe, was unanimous in recommending it. So I didn't petition or call or try to stir up anything. I don't know exactly what the residents are so upset about. I would dare to bet that Fellowship Church has more offices inside their church than would be on this site if the truth were known by the time it's built, but I'd be willing to answer any other questions, but I just don't, I don't know what we can do with the property. It's zoned RS1, Stan, that's, you get seven or eight small lots, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
You build seven or eight small houses on it or... And as far as Jerry Winberry, I've got subdivisions, you can see Copper Creek, Copper Creek Condos, Rice Mill, Windchase, I got subdivisions all around there and I have no idea what he's talking about, that's what'll affect him. He's way to the north of this and I have no idea what he's talking about. I'll find out, but...
Mayor, I think we need to, I mean, we're talking our growth to our community and he's made an investment in buying that property and he do deserve opportunity to develop that property. I mean, because right now, he's paying taxes on it and that property is sitting there. So give him an opportunity to invest and to at least try to make some money off his property and he's just sitting there paying taxes on it.
Okay, any other questions from Council as far as the developer or petitioner for this zoning?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, the public hearing is still open and I'll ask if there's anyone else who would like to be heard on this ordinance, in support of or in opposition to. Come on down. If you'd just be kind enough to introduce yourself to the Council and give us your address if you would.
I'm Dot Couples and I live at 97 Stonehenge, which is in Cherry Hill subdivision. I have no opposition to developing the land. However, I would like for it to be developed as a residential. We have schools, churches, homes in our area and that's what we would like to keep. So, you know, I know they want to develop the property. I would like for the property to be developed so that it would look nicer than it does as a vacant lot, but I'd like for it to be done in a way that it blends in with our neighborhood, which would be residential. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay, if not, hearing none, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we have a motion and a second. I'll ask the Council, any other discussion? If not, please vote. And Ms. Leeann? The vote is?
The vote is? Five against, two for, and two abstaining.
Okay, your motion fails. Thank you, Stan.
Your honor.
Under second reading, so item eight. First, I have a consideration ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Short Street, between O'Connor Street and McNoah Street. Council approved this on first reading, have a motion?
Second.
We have a second discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item two is consideration ordinance to amend official codes of the City of Jackson, Melrose Title II Building Utility, etc., codes and modifications.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, before we get into item nine, on new business, let me take just a moment and introduce Dexter Walker, who is an intern in Recreation Parks Department. Dexter is here from East Tennessee State University, any alumni, eh? Thank you Dexter, good to have you. Okay, let's go into item nine, new business, consideration of approval, state contracts for mowing services.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second discussion from Council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And item two is consideration approval of open records policy as required by state law for July 1st, 2017. I think, Ms. Bell, I think this is something that's mandatory through state law?
That is correct and you have a copy that there are a couple of changes that were made since Thursday evening. First of all, we have added on page two, under responding to public records, PRSC for the city or any designated PRSC for a specific department. The reason is, many of the requests go to the police department and this will allow them to handle those requests rather than the city recorder, Mr. Alaphon. In addition, on the page regarding pricing, relevant to your discussion on Thursday evening, I did contact Ann Butterworth, Open Records Counsel for the State of Tennessee, and she has allowed us to increase that to 25 cents per copy rather than 15 cents. And then after consulting with Major Corley, we have decided to start charging after one hour of labor and they did approve that at the state. Those are the only changes you have in today's copy.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve and a second discussion. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration contract with Ford Construction Company for construction of Westover Road Bridge replacement using unit pricing, it being the lowest and best bid received.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion from Council. Council please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is consideration contract with TLM for professional CEI services to the North Highland Avenue Roundabout.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second discussion?
Mayor, I have a question if I could.
Yes.
And I know in our agenda review, you had given a little background on kind of how we got here. If you would put that on the record today, I'd appreciate it. And then I had a question for Scott as well. Mayor, if you could just give us kind of a little background on...
Yeah, a little background on the roundabout. Obviously, as the lift was being developed and the construction of the apartments and the homes in that area, one of the prerequisites from really West Tennessee Healthcare was that we initiate a roundabout at Dedrick, remove the traffic light mainly because of the downhill elevation coming south on Highland as you approach Dedrick. And you all will recall, sometimes you get a little heavy foot coming down that hill and with pedestrians walking back and forth across Highland to the left, it felt like it'd be almost mandatory that one be constructed. And secondly, the roundabout access will be the main entrance into Phase Two of Jackson Lock, which will include another 100 apartments. They'd just gotten underway this week with the grading and preparing those lots for additional construction, another 100 apartments and 40 some odd homes. That will be the main arterial streak going into Phase Two. The funding for the roundabout will be 100% state and federal funding. We'll have local, we'll be handling that project locally, we'll not, Scott. And with where we are now, we'll hopefully be underway by October or before. All the property has been acquired and you'll see some empty buildings there. It's not because it went out of business, it's because it's been bought and we're gonna build a roundabout there. Any other questions?
No, no, thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that and he answered the questions I was gonna ask you as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Yes.
Council please vote.
And the vote is eight yes with one no.
Okay. Item five.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Item five is consideration resolution to authorize a Madison County clerk to sell all city stickers and that is to clarify some confusion, if I'm not mistaken, to where all those stickers will be sold over there rather than people not knowing where to get them. They'll all be sold over there and will validate, try to validate those best they can, whether that is a city resident or not. Did I understand that correctly? We hope they will, Karen? We hope they will verify it.
Yes, in the past, when you go to the county clerk's office, they'll say, "Are you a resident?" And they really can't enforce it. Now, it will actually be on the notices that are sent out for your state plates to sell all city stickers in that office. There'll be no increase in the fee from what Fred is now collecting for us and therefore eliminate the confusion of, "Should I get one or should I not?" If you're a city resident, his database will say, "You are required by city law to get a sticker." So we're hoping to increase the sale of our city stickers.
Thank you, Karen.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, item six is approval continuation of JAG GRIP GRIP contract for the Jackson Police Department.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for that.
Danielle Jones is here if you have any questions, but we've been fortunate enough to get a three-year extension on this grant, which will pay for our GRIP prosecutor under this particular grant and the total amount for the three years is $214,725.
It is a state grant, very fortunate to get and thank staff for really pursuing that and working on it.
Quick question then, Mayor, is this basically the same as what we've had in the past?
Yeah, just continuation.
And I don't know why we would prosecute GRIP, but what does GRIP stand for?
It's strictly gang prosecutor.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, any other questions, Council? Do we have a motion, a second or not?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item seven, Ms. Bell, budget amendments?
So moved.
Wait a minute.
You want to go ahead and make a motion about the amount, that's fine.
No, you stay where you are.
Okay.
If you change, then I'm gonna go back and reduce what I said.
All right. Today you have one budget amendment for you for the Jackson Ballpark capital in the amount of $54,380.67. This was for an emergency purchase of two air conditioning units in the amount of $34,089 and some additional equipment that they needed for the concessions and video production in the amount of $20,291.67. This does require draw on fund balance. Where were those? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I need to wait for the discussion, I'm sorry.
Okay. One amendment you give out though, this one?
Yeah, that's just the one amendment.
Okay, is there a motion for a...
So moved.
Motion, second. Council, any discussion? Council please vote.
Yes, those two conditioners, air conditioners, where would they go in the locker room?
Those are going into the Ballpark Clubhouse, is what I'm telling.
Okay, all right.
And I think they've been, I think they've been there since Ballpark has and they've kind of glued those together over the years and they're just not worth going after now. Okay, Council please vote.
And the vote is eight yes and one no.
Thank you, okay. Second, you got it, both of them?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, invoices over $10,000. Invoices over $10,000.
I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion made and second. Council please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.